Please note, for the record, we do have a quorum present. Please join us as Councilor Bishop Cooper leads us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with gratitude and thanksgiving. We ask tonight if we come to gather, if we come to gather our community, if we come to glean, if we come to make decisions tonight, we just ask that you would order our step. Help us to remember the community, help us to remember our purpose and the reason. And we thank you that we would make sound decision to we give you the glory and we give you the honor. And we call it done now. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is the symbol of which we shall never be in justice.
Thank you, Councilor Cooper. Now we go to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
No moves.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hands. Motion passes. And moving to special reports and presentations, tonight's nonprofit spotlight is SC Thrive. SC Thrive's Chief Development Officer Heather Love will present. Ms. Love, you have the floor.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all so much for having me. Like you said, my name is Heather Love and I'm the Chief Development Officer with SC Thrive. And if you want to go ahead to the next slide. This is just a little bit about our organization. So we're a statewide nonprofit that's been in existence for about 15 years. And we were originally established to serve as the Benefit Bank of South Carolina, which some of you all might be familiar with. But the Benefit Bank is a proprietary piece of software that our organization uses to screen and help individuals either in crisis or living in poverty. Apply for different types of state and federal work supports for which they might be eligible. So again, like I mentioned, it was founded as the Benefit Bank in 2010 roughly. And is now called Thrive Hub is the new name of the software. We rebranded it around about 2019 or so. And you can see there that our overall mission is to help lead South Carolinians to stability by providing innovative and efficient access to quality of life resources. And so in addition to the software that I mentioned, I'll talk a little bit about what else our organization does. So you can see here, I mentioned about the technology already. So our primary purpose is really to leverage technology solutions to connect people to resources that help lift them up out of poverty or to help them overcome crisis situations. But in addition to that, and through our work with technology, we essentially became a thought leader across the state in training in a number of different areas. So we helped build the capacity of the community and of different people to help serve their communities. And then last but not least, we do offer some particular programming, which is really what I'm going to talk about here tonight. The programs that we are working on specifically in Georgetown County to help people thrive. And our goal in the work that we do is to address whole person care. So that's, as you can see here, physical, mental, financial, well-being and more. So this is the first thing that I mentioned, Thrive Hub. That's our proprietary technology solution that helps individuals and families apply for different federal and state work supports for which they might be eligible. So that's anything from Medicaid, SNAP, TANF, we're about to add WIC to the platform. And it's essentially a one-stop shop. So the way you can think about it is, you know, when you go to, let's just use the DMV as an example, right? You go to the DMV and you wait in line for a while. And, you know, it might be, it might be a seamless process. You know, you might have showed up without all the documents that you needed and you had to go home and do it again and that type of thing. Imagine living in, you know, living in poverty or facing some type of crisis situation and having to do that with multiple state agencies in order to get access to things that might, that have been designed to help you. So, you know, you have to go to DHHS to apply for Medicaid and you have to go to DSS to apply for SNAP benefits. And you have to go to the Department of Public Health to apply for WIC. And so just imagine how difficult that is for those of us who have resources and have access. It's difficult for, it's difficult for everybody. It's difficult for the average person to do those types of things. So like I said, you know, for individuals that are, you know, are facing other types of barriers, our technology solution is intended to help those individuals and families either, excuse me, either come to one of our 150 partner locations across the state or call into our contact center, which is located in Columbia. And they can do that and apply for a variety of benefits, like I mentioned, all in one fell swoop. So all with one application, one screening process. They only have to do this once. And if they have any type of mobility or transportation challenges or any other types of difficulties interacting with either somebody over the phone or somebody, or excuse me, online, then that's how our system is designed so that a real live human person can help walk those folks through the application process to make access to those benefits, that they can access them more easily. And then this is a little bit about the variety of trainings that we do. So we do 101 types of trainings on all different types of benefits. Like I mentioned, Medicaid, SNAP, WIC, TANF, those are some of the bigger ones. But we also are a certified provider of mental health first aid certifications. We do those for adults and for youth. We offer different types of simulations. So we offer poverty simulations to organizations throughout the community and around the state, as well as we have a self-care, excuse me, we have poverty simulations, we have a caregiver simulation that we recently launched that helps folks understand what it's like to be supporting someone as a caregiver. So whether that's somebody elderly, somebody with a disability, or even, even a young child or a child with a disability. And then we also do, we offer, we offer, we have a financial literacy course, we have self-care workshops. And we also, as of January of this year, began running and offering the Students in Action program, which is what I'm going to talk about a little bit more in a second. You can go on to the next one. And then finally, we offer, from time to time, we will offer programs as opportunities become available. So up until this month, actually, we were running a food pharmacy program specifically in Richland County. It was a hub and spoke model where local South Carolina growers would bring fresh fruits and vegetables to our office in Columbia. And then faith-based organizations that have food pantries at their locations around the county, when they could come in once a month to pick up fresh fruits and vegetables and then offer those things alongside the pantry staples that they would offer through their food pantry on a regular basis. And that's just an example. We did, we have a Thrive Seniors program where we do lunch and learns to help educate senior adults about the different benefits that they're eligible for. And then we have our Students in Action program, which we're partnering with the Benel Foundation on, which is really why I'm here tonight. So if you go on to the next one, this is a little bit about Students in Action. So this program has been in existence in South Carolina for over 15 years now. So Students in Action is a service learning and leadership development program for teenagers. Previously, it was administered by a nonprofit organization called Multiplying Good. Multiplying Good was also the parent organization of the Jefferson Awards. And I know a lot of people are familiar with that Jefferson Awards name. And now the, essentially, the Students in Action program is no longer part of the Multiplying Good umbrella. It has now been folded in under the SC Thrive umbrella. And we've continued with this programming accordingly. So this is just a little bit about what Students in Action consists of. Like I said, it's a high school service learning and leadership development program. It functions as either a class or a club inside either high schools or without a school time provider. So with after-school programs or summer programming. And essentially, the variety of components that comprise this program are twice annual student leadership conferences. So we're having those in October. And for the students in Georgetown County, they have the option of going to the one that will be held in Charleston or the one that will be held at, or a Georgetown Tech at the Myrtle Beach campus. Both of those are in October. And they are, they are amazing. I mean, they're a day-long, these programs are completely free to young people who want to participate. And they participate in a variety of workshops that help them with both leadership and life skills that are aimed to help keep them on track to graduate, but also to prepare them with the knowledge, the skills and the abilities that they need to be successful after they graduate, whether that means, you know, college or the workforce, whatever comes next for them. And we couple those student leadership conferences that we offer twice a year, once in October and once in February, with in-school lessons. So we have curriculum that adult leaders, that can be an educator, a teacher, or another type of youth leader, can walk these students through either, we have like a learning management system, so we have it's online, or they can do it offline as well, to help students understand what they need to plan and execute a high-quality service project that really makes a difference in their community. And so that's, that's where you see there, we essentially pair the in-person leadership conferences with the in-school lessons that are either online or in-person, like I mentioned, to help students produce at least one high-quality service project annually. And then ultimately, we celebrate them at the end of the year in what we call our annual celebration of service. And these are the various components of the Students in Action program. For those of you who might have some knowledge of this world of service learning, these steps are based on the I-Party service learning process, that's sort of a best practice in youth leadership development with service learning component. And so we essentially walk young people through the process of preparing to serve their community, investigating a community need, executing that high-quality or high-impact service project, reflecting on the work that they've accomplished, sharing it, whether that be in real life or on social media, and then celebrating them at the end of the year for their accomplishments. And the idea behind this is that, I'm sure, you know, either when you are in high school or if you have a high schooler or you know a high schooler, you're probably aware that oftentimes they are asked to do some type of service as part of something that they're involved in. So that could be a class or a club, whatever the case may be. But a lot of times, it's sort of a check-the-box type of thing. So, you know, in order to get 10 extra points on your exam, you know, go get somebody to sign off on the fact that you did five hours of community service. And there's not really a lot of learning that necessarily goes along behind that, right? It's just, like I said, sort of a check-the-box type of activity where young people are essentially, you know, doing this because somebody told them to or because it looks good on their college application or whatever the case may be. But for, when you couple this idea of volunteer service with service learning, the whole idea is to really help them gain, like I said, those leadership and life skills that they need to be successful through the act of volunteering and serving their community. So if you go on to the next slide. This just talks a little bit more about what they actually gain. So there's a networking component, of course, for all the students that participate. And they, I mean, they love that. When they come to the leadership conferences in October and February, like I mentioned, they get to meet kids not only from other schools but also from other parts of the state. And, I mean, we've been doing this, like I said, for 15 years. And we've seen young people form, you know, lifelong friendships as a result of this. We've seen them want to work with kids in other schools or other parts of the state on service projects and that they would never otherwise have crossed paths with. We really work to help students understand and learn across their differences. So regardless of what type of background they come from, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of what community they live in, we attempt to level the playing field to ensure that all young people understand that if they care about their community and they want to make a difference, it doesn't matter who you are or where you came from, or, you know, how much money you have in the bank, anybody can make a difference in their community. And so that's a huge component of this. Oh, go back one more, sorry. And so I mentioned the networking component, the service learning. So that's where, not only do we measure the impact that we have on the students through this program, but also their exponential impact on their school and on their community through the service projects that they complete. And then the leadership development skills that they, we actually assess them on those leadership development skills. So for those of you who might be familiar with the South Carolina Council on Economic Competitiveness, they run an initiative called Transform SC, which focuses on preparing young people for the South Carolina workforce. And we have specifically aligned our components, the knowledge, skills and abilities that we both teach to in this program and then also assess the young people on in alignment with that profile of the South Carolina graduate that Transform SC has created in partnership. They created it in partnership with the business community to make sure, like I said, we are preparing our young people to succeed when they graduate. And then the one thing that we always say makes our program a little bit different from others is that we really focus a lot on celebration. So there's a whole body of research out there that shows that, you know, most people do not go into service or into volunteerism or embark upon this endeavor because they want notoriety or recognition for it. But by giving young people, and adults for that matter, the opportunity to have a stage or a platform to share about their work, it gives them an opportunity to inspire others to get involved and give back as a result. And so, you know, like I said, I mean, the program, when we do the celebration of service at the end of the year, they typically do it in front of a panel of evaluators, which are community leaders that we bring in to volunteer to assess the students on various components of their service work. And that might be their oral presentation, it might be their writing skills, it might be their creativity. You know, like I said, some of those leadership and life skills that they gain through the program. And none, I mean, those volunteers always walk away being like, I now have faith in the next generation because they hear about these amazing things that these young people are doing and how that's impacting their community and how much they care and how much they've learned and what a difference it's made in their lives. And we wouldn't really have that component if it wasn't for our emphasis on celebrating them and giving them that stage to share with the community about the impact that they've had. And then a little, I've talked about all of this, but this is just a little bit about the learning objectives that students gain in the program. So all those things in the blue square are part of that profile of the South Carolina graduate that I mentioned. So it's critical thinking and problem solving, communication and collaboration, innovation and digital literacy, self-direction and personal accountability, a global perspective and resilience and ethical leadership. So we, those are the, those soft skills, right? The things that they don't necessarily get in math class or ELA or Spanish or history. You know, it's the, it's those intangible things that we want them to gain through project-based learning. And then some of the specific knowledge that we hope that they gain, like these, the more tangible hard skills are things like fundamentals of public speaking and things like, now that the program is part of SC Thrive and our organization has expertise around the poverty simulations that I mentioned, we offer a financial literacy course, we can layer all that stuff in to Students in Action so that the young people are gaining from SC Thrive's expertise in that as well. So that's, that's great. We've already had all of our teachers and adult leaders who are a part of this program, they're super fired up about the idea that, you know, they can gain, that some of their students can gain some financial literacy curriculum through this, as well as mental health. I mean, so many students choose to focus the projects that they do on mental health because they see it as such an issue in their schools and communities. And because we're a certified provider of mental health first aid, there's a natural synergy there where we're able to now certify young people that have an interest in that, in how to be mental health first aid providers. So that's just, the orange block is just a little bit more about the new things that we're able to offer through this program as part of SC Thrive. And then, so in Georgetown County, so we've had a presence in this county, like I said, for many, many years. The team, the Students in Action team from Andrews High School, actually, in 2018, I believe, they were recognized on a national stage for their service work through, I don't know if y'all are probably familiar with this, but they, they had decided at the time, this, this class at Andrews High School had decided that they were, they wanted to make sure that was when the Read to Succeed Act was passed and, you know, everybody that was not reading on grade level by the end of the third grade was at risk of being held back a year. And so the students in this leadership class at Andrews High School decided to make it their mission, that they wanted to ensure that, I think it was Sampit and Andrews Elementary Schools, I want to say, that they chose to, they really wanted to target those two elementary schools to make sure that the students that were at those elementary schools were on track to be reading on grade level by the end of the third grade in alignment with this new, this new law passed by the state legislature. And so at the time, they, they did this huge countywide book drive. And I don't remember where exactly they did this big reveal, but it was like an Oprah style, like, you get a book, you get a book, you all get a book. And WPDE came out and covered it. There's, the article is, or the story, rather, is still up on their website. So, I mean, it was awesome. It was, it was a really impactful project. And they learned, not only, as you can imagine, about their state-level legislature and laws that had been passed and how that, how that actually directly affected their lives and the lives of the children younger than them, maybe some of their siblings that are in their community. But then also how they could work to make a difference to ensure that those young people were, like I said, reading, whatever they could do to make a difference to help those young people, most of whom were living, you know, come from a lower socioeconomic background, to be sure, to, excuse me, to ensure that they were more likely to be reading on grade level. So this is a really super cool example that has meant a lot to me over these years, specifically from, from Andrews. And so the program, like I said, has also been active at, at all four Georgetown County public high schools over the years. And not only do we, I think in most of those schools, it is either a part of their leadership elective or it's part of the JAG program, Jobs for Americans graduates, at the, at the high schools in Georgetown County. But again, across the state, we can have the program active with any type of club or organization, whether that's in-school or out-of-school. And the thing about cost that I think is very important to mention is that we, through support from organizations like the Benel Foundation, we are able to offer this program completely free of charge to any young person who wants to participate across the county and also across the state. they've accomplished, sharing it, whether that be in real life or on social media, and then celebrating them at the end of the year for their accomplishments. And the idea behind this is that, I'm sure, you know, either when you were in high school, or if you have a high schooler, or you know a high schooler, you're probably aware, that oftentimes they are asked to do some type of service as part of something that they're involved in. So that could be a class, or a club, whatever the case may be. But a lot of times, it's sort of a check-the-box type of thing. So, you know, in order to get 10 extra points on your exam, you know, go get somebody to sign off on the fact that you did five hours of community service. And there's not really a lot of learning that necessarily goes along behind that, right? It's just, like I said, sort of a check-the-box type of activity, where young people are essentially, you know, doing this because somebody told them to, or because it looks good on their college application, or whatever the case may be. But for, when you couple this idea of volunteer service with service learning, the whole idea is to really help them gain, like I said, those leadership and life skills that they need to be successful through the act of volunteering and serving their community. So if you go on to the next slide. This just talks a little bit more about what they actually gain. So, there's a networking component, of course, for all the students that participate. And they, I mean, they love that. When they come to the leadership conferences in October and February, like I mentioned, they get to meet kids not only from other schools, but also from other parts of the state. And, I mean, we've been doing this, like I said, for 15 years, and we've seen young people form, you know, lifelong friendships as a result of this. We've seen them want to work with kids in other schools or other parts of the state on service projects that they would never otherwise have crossed paths with. We really work to help students understand and learn across their differences. So regardless of what type of background they come from, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of what community they live in, we attempt to level the playing field to ensure that all young people understand that if they care about their community and they want to make a difference, it doesn't matter who you are, or where you came from, or, you know, how much money you have in the bank, anybody can make a difference in their community. And so that's a huge component of this. Oh, go back one more, sorry. And so, I mentioned the networking component, the service learning. So that's where, not only do we measure the impact that we have on the students through this program, but also their exponential impact on their school and on their community through the service projects that they complete. And then the leadership development skills that they, we actually assess them on those leadership development skills. So for those of you who might be familiar with the South Carolina Council on Economic Competitiveness, they run an initiative called Transform SC, which focuses on preparing young people for the South Carolina workforce. And we have specifically aligned our components, the knowledge, skills, and abilities that we both teach to in this program, and then also assess the young people on, in alignment with that profile of the South Carolina graduate that Transform SC has created in partnership. They created it in partnership with the business community to make sure, like I said, we are preparing our young people to succeed when they graduate. And then, the one thing that we always say makes our program a little bit different from others is that we really focus a lot on celebration. So, there's a whole body of research out there that shows that, you know, most people do not go into service, or into volunteerism, or embark upon this endeavor because they want notoriety or recognition for it. But by giving young people, and adults for that matter, the opportunity to have a stage or a platform to share about their work, it gives them an opportunity to inspire others to get involved and give back as a result. And so, you know, like I said, I mean, the program, when we do the celebration of service at the end of the year, they typically do it in front of a panel of evaluators, which are community leaders, that we bring in to volunteer to assess the students on various components of their service work. And that might be their oral presentation, it might be their writing skills, it might be their creativity, you know, like I said, some of those leadership and life skills that they gain through the program. And none, I mean, those volunteers always walk away being like, I now have faith in the next generation, because they hear about these amazing things that these young people are doing, and how that's impacting their community, and how much they care, and how much they've learned, and what a difference it's made in their lives. And we wouldn't really have that component if it wasn't for our emphasis on celebrating them and giving them that stage to share with the community about the impact that they've had. And then, a little, I've talked about all of this, but this is just a little bit about the learning objectives that students gain in the program. So, all those things in the blue square are part of that profile of the South Carolina graduate that I mentioned. So it's critical thinking and problem-solving, communication and collaboration, innovation and digital literacy, self-direction and personal accountability, a global perspective, and resilience and ethical leadership. So, we, that's, those are the, those soft skills, right? The things that they don't necessarily get in math class, or ELA, or Spanish, or history, you know, it's the, it's those intangible things that we want them to gain through project-based learning. And then, some of the specific knowledge that we hope that they gain, like these, the more tangible, hard skills are things like fundamentals of public speaking, and things like, now that the program is part of SC Thrive, and our organization has expertise around the poverty simulations that I mentioned, we offer a financial literacy course, we can layer all that stuff in to Students in Action, so that the young people are gaining from SC Thrive's expertise in that as well. So that's, that's great. We've already had all of our teachers and adult leaders who are a part of this program, they're super fired up about the idea that, you know, they can gain, that some of their students can gain some financial literacy curriculum through this, as well as mental health. I mean, so many students choose to focus the projects that they do on mental health, because they see it as such an issue in their schools and communities. And because we're a certified provider of mental health first aid, there's just a natural synergy there, where we're able to now certify young people that have an interest in that, in how to be mental health first aid providers. So that's just, the orange block is just a little bit more about the new things that we're able to offer through this program as part of SC Thrive. And then, in, so in Georgetown County, so we've had a presence in this county, like I said, for many, many years. The team, the Students in Action team from Andrews High School, actually, in 2018, I believe, they were recognized on a national stage for their service work through, I don't know if, y'all are probably familiar with this, but they, they had decided at the time, this, this class at Andrews High School had decided that they were, they wanted to make sure, that was when the Read to Succeed Act was passed, and, you know, everybody that was not reading on grade level by the end of the third grade was at risk of being held back a year. And so, the, the students in this leadership class at Andrews High School decided to make it their mission, that they wanted to ensure that, I think it was, San Pitt and Andrews Elementary Schools, I want to say, that, that they chose to, they really wanted to target those two elementary schools to make sure that the students that were at those elementary schools were on track to be reading on grade level by the end of the third grade, in alignment with this new, this new law passed by the state legislature. And so, at the time, they, they did this huge countywide book drive, and I don't remember where exactly they did this big reveal, but it was like an Oprah-style, like, you get a book, you get a book, you all get a book. And WPDE came out and covered it, there's, the article is, or the story, rather, is still up on their website. So, I mean, it was awesome. It was, it was a really impactful project. And they learned, not only, as you can imagine, about their state-level legislature and laws that had been passed, and how that, how that actually directly affected their lives and the lives of the children younger than them, maybe some of their siblings that are in their community, but then also how they could work to make a difference, to ensure that those young people were, like I said, reading, whatever they could do to make a difference, to help those young people, most of whom were living, you know, come from a lower socioeconomic background, to be sure, to, excuse me, to ensure that they were more likely to be reading on grade level. So, this is a really super cool example that has meant a lot to me over these years, specifically from, from Andrews. And so, the program, like I said, has also been active at, at all four Georgetown County public high schools over the years. And not only do we, I think in most of those schools, it is either a part of their leadership elective, or it's part of the JAG program, Jobs for America's Graduates, at the, at the high schools in Georgetown County. But again, across the state, we can have the program active with any type of club or organization, whether that's in-school or out-of-school. And the, the thing about cost that I think is very important to mention is that we, through support from organizations like the Benel Foundation, we are able to offer this program completely free of charge to any young person who wants to participate across the county and, and also across the state. So, they, the, the funds help support the cost of the curriculum development, the leadership conferences, the end-of-year celebration of service. And then oftentimes, we're able to provide them either mini-grants or stipends to help with their service projects, or sometimes it looks like transportation to get them, you know, from Andrews to Charleston, or Andrews to Myrtle Beach on the bus to go to the conference, that kind of thing. So, so we're extremely, we cannot overstate the, our gratitude for organizations like the Benel Foundation, because we wouldn't be able to do this program and impact these lives if it wasn't for funders like that. So. And that's it. I'm, like I said, I'm the Chief Development Officer at SC Thrive. I live right here in Georgetown County. And my colleague, Emily Schultz, she's our statewide youth program manager. And either of us can be contacted at any time. You can check out our website, it's just scthrive.org, if you have, if you're interested. We're going to be building a new webpage about this program, so it's not up there yet, if you go check it out. But, but soon, you will be able to find information about, about Students in Action on our website. And I'm happy to take any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Are there any questions?
Ms. Love, I have two questions.
Please.
The first question I have, what about the community awareness of South Carolina Drive?
Community awareness of SC Thrive?
Yes.
Yes. So, a lot of, I would say that the role of our organization is, in many ways, something of a, of a hub, or a capacity builder for other nonprofit organizations. So, we have a lot of, we have a lot of partners in Georgetown County that work with us to implement our technology that I mentioned at the beginning of this. And so, I would say that probably if you ask any of our nonprofits in, in Georgetown, they'd be like, oh yeah, I know SC Thrive. And that's actually one of the things that we're working on, right? Is to help create more community awareness of, you know, of our organization, and, and what we do, both here and across the state. We have not participated in Palmetto Giving Day in the past, but I know that that's something that we want to do in, you know, in May of 2026. So hopefully, that will also help bring some awareness of what we do to, to this county specifically. So.
And my second question, are the children, do they have some form of chaperone when they go out into communities, some?
Yes, that's a, that's a great question, yes. So it's a, it's a, like a team-based program. So they have to have an adult that is like their advisor, if you will, or their sponsor. And usually, that's a teacher, but it might be an educator, like a librarian, or a guidance counselor, or another staff member at the school. Or if it's in an out-of-school time program, like with Boys and Girls Club, or Friendship, whatever the case may be, they, they do, they do all this work under the supervision of at least one adult leader. Usually, I didn't mention this, but usually the average size of an SAA team is about 15 students. So that's kind of the, the goal. They work really well. Some are bigger, some are smaller, but they do have at least one adult leading them at all times.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Yes, thank you. I think Bishop Cooper may have already asked a question, really, but I was more concerned about the marketing aspect of it also, because it seems like your program offers a lot of beneficial, you know, make a lot of beneficial offerings throughout the community, but, but how does it get to the community for the community to know? So I think your response to Bishop Cooper's has been, has been well spoken, really. I was concerned about the marketing aspects for the community to know about it, because...
No, it's always a challenge, isn't it, with nonprofit organizations, because, you know, our, our budgets are limited. And so, we do our absolute best to do as much marketing as we can with the limited, you know, financial resources. But I, I would, I would assume that every nonprofit organization would like to have more to do that type of awareness building with. But, but yeah, we do, we do what we can with what we have, so.
Because sometimes you can call upon others to assist in your marketing. So maybe you need to look at joining in with some other community organizations who can actually get the word out to the different facets within our community, because that's really what's necessary.
Yeah. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Love, for saying that you do for Georgetown County. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
And Councilor Rant would like to highlight our Olympian, Ms. Melissa Jefferson-Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. You know, I think about a couple of weeks ago, we gave some highlights to our locally, local Olympian, really, Melissa Jefferson-Wooden. And we gave her best wishes in the World Olympics in Tokyo. And as you, all of you may have known, she's now the three-time gold medalist winner. And she's from Georgetown County. So I think, I don't need to go through all of the details, because she's exceeded in the 100, 200, and the 400 relay. And she achieved gold in all of them, and now she's one of the fastest runners in the world at this particular point. And she's from Georgetown, the local community of Dunbar. So I think council should really give some, give another applaud to Melissa Jefferson-Wooden for really putting Georgetown County on the world stage, because now, everybody knows about Georgetown, and we're looking for industries, people, and everyone to come here. So now they know where Georgetown is, because they are aware that Melissa Jefferson-Wooden has really put us on the map, and gave us some accolades that we can actually go by to show that good things happen within Georgetown. All we have to do is continue working hard and making these achievements, and good things happen in Georgetown. So Melissa Wood, Melissa Jefferson-Wooden has shown that. So we need to give her a nice round of applause for the accomplishment that she has done being ambassador for Georgetown.
Thank you. Go Melissa. I follow her on social media. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilor Rant. Now we move on to public comments. Public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. A timer is provided on the screen, and at the end of your time, please wrap up your comments promptly. While speaking, please be sure to address council only and refrain from personal attacks. Council will not respond to any questions during this period. While a speaker has a floor, the public will respect the speaker and allow them their time to address council. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk to council before the meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers for tonight's meeting?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, we have one speaker, and that is Mr. Dan Stacy.
Okay. Mr. Stacy?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Again, I spoke last time about, tonight's agenda item is 8A. My client and I are here, as we discussed before, this is a third and final reading for a rezoning request. We made a planning commission meeting and got a unanimous recommendation of approval with no public comment to the negative, no negative questions. We've been through first and second. I think Ms. Richardson will confirm with really no additional questions, but we're here if you have them for your third and final reading for this, and we appreciate your attention. We do, again, I said, have a user for this site. I wish I could disclose more about it, but this is not a speculative request. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our consent agenda. There are four matters on the consent agenda that were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. I'm not going to do as good a job as Chairman Elliott, but I'll read through these. Procurement number 25-057, FY26 CERP vehicles for Parks and Rec. Procurement 25-086, Ford Explorers for the Sheriff's Office. Procurement number 25-069, purchase of a 2026 ambulance. And procurement number 25-087, seven Chevrolet Traverses for the Sheriff's Office. Glad we're taking care of emergency management and sheriff, and Parks and Rec. Moving to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution 25-28, in honor and recognition of Coastal Carolina's Association of Realtors. Eightieth anniversary celebration. We'll now have a report from Ms. Madison Cooper, who I understand is not here, and Ms. Jackie Broach will be doing that report. Ms. Broach, you have the floor?
I know that Ms. Cooper is sorry not to be here. It's due to circumstances beyond her control. So I'm just going to read the resolution.
You're welcome.
Whereas the Coastal Carolina's Association of Realtors, CCAR, received its charter from the National Association of Realtors on October the 26th, 1945, and has served the people of Georgetown and Ori County since its founding year. And whereas the Board of Directors, members, and staff of CCAR are committed to ensuring that their neighbors can pursue the American dream of real property ownership as a key to community well-being and economic stability. And whereas the real estate industry had a total economic impact of $166.9 million on Georgetown County in 2024. And whereas members of CCAR have exclusive use of the term Realtor, Realtors, and Realtor Associate under the provisions of the Constitution and bylaws of the National Association of Realtors. And whereas Realtors adhere to a code of ethics which states Realtors should recognize that the interests of the nation and its citizens require the highest and best use of the land and the widest distribution of land ownership. They require the creation of adequate housing, the building of functioning cities, the development of productive industries and farms, and the preservation of a healthful environment. And whereas CCAR supports policies that encourage property choice, economic development, and adequate infrastructure in an effort to protect the quality of life that has made the Grand Strand an attractive place to locate. And whereas the Grand Strand's largest trade organization, CCAR, is a steadfast community partner supporting thousands of jobs directly and indirectly across the region, whose members give back to localities through grants and volunteer service, and work to build generation, to build generational wealth for their neighbors through property ownership. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Georgetown County Council does hereby recognize and commend Coastal Carolina's Association of Realtors for 80 years of tireless service and dedication to the vitality of our community. Furthermore, this proclamation will be presented to Coastal Carolina's Association of Realtors as a symbol of congratulations and appreciation. So shall it be adopted this 23rd day of September. I know Ms. Cooper's not here. I'm not sure if there are any members of the executive committee here who may wish to accept the...
It's like there is.
If there are, I would invite them to please come up to accept it and take a photo.
Do you want a motion? Let's approve it first.
That probably would be smart.
Thank you, Ms. Broach. Is there a motion to pass Resolution number 25-28?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes.
Do you think?
Now we could perhaps invite them to take a photo.
Bop in my knee.
Thank you again, Ms. Broach. Thank, congratulations to CCAR. Moving down to Resolution-25-29, recognizing and honoring Ms. Charis Langston, our finance director on the occasion of retirement. We'll now have a report from Ms. Alma Sierra, clerk to council. Ms. Sierra, you have the floor?
Thank you. So our wonderful finance director, Ms. Charis Langston, will be retiring after 27 years of service with Georgetown County. And I think it is very important to note that she began her career as an accounts payable clerk, and then has worked her way up to director. And that's, that's pretty cool, Charis. And the finance department has remained consistent and has upheld the highest standards under her guidance. And although Charis has requested that we not make a big deal or present a formal resolution, we still want to recognize her and make sure her years of service do not go unnoticed. And her career path is a true inspiration, and we want her to know how loved and appreciated she is. With that, we ask that you pass this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra. Sierra, is there a motion to approve Resolution 25-29, recognizing and honoring Charis Langston, finance director on the occasion of retirement?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say, Charis, see you back there. Thank you for your service to Georgetown County. And I'd like to make a big deal out of it, but I'll let you slide by. Yep. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Charis.
Madam Vice Chair, I have one, one more question.
That's good.
Charis, if you would, please come up front. Would you sign my budget?
We should still get a picture. You think we could still get a picture? Come on, Charis, you don't want to get a picture? All right. Wow. Moving on to Resolution 25-30, declaration of official intent to reimburse. And we have a report from almost retired Ms. Charis Langston, county finance director. Ms. Langston?
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Council. Resolution 2530 is the intent to reimburse for our fiscal year '26 CERP. It's part of the capital equipment plan. This resolution is required for us to seek financing later on in the fiscal year. Staff requests that you approve this resolution. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Just for you, Mr. Newton, I do have some, some numbers, because I know you love numbers. The total CERP budgeted purchases this year are going to be $9,478,150. And of those, we're going to be financing $8,82,700 worth.
Are there any questions for Ms. Langston?
What's the instrument for doing that? Is that a bond-issue thing, or is it too small for that?
No, it's not a bond, it's lease financing, straight up with the bank. We'll go out to bid, straight up to the bank for financing terms. I think this year, we have four-year, six-year, eight-year, and 10-year financing, because we have some fire trucks for the, Brandon left. But we have fire trucks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 25-30?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Now we move to, thank you, Charis. Now we move to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance 25-29, an ordinance to rezone a portion of three parcels located at 3273 High Market Street, Georgetown, totaling approximately 46.84 acres, identified as portions of TMS number 01-0202-119-00-00, TMS number 01-0202-119-02-00, and TMS number 01-0202-119-03-00 from Tyson Industrial Plan Development, general commercial, and 10,000-square-foot residential to heavy industrial. Ms. Holly Richardson?
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. As you said, these parcels are currently located within an industrial park plan development, and they are mostly vacant. This PD was established back in 1981 as a heavy industrial plan development, and approved uses for the PD at that time included a batch plant, a welding shop, a sawmill, a pole mill, and storage operations. This request includes approximately 46 acres that are zoned PD. The other MR10 and GC sections are much smaller. The large, largest majority of this is zoned plan development. The request here is from the property owner to remove about 46 acres from the PD. The remainder of the PD will consist of a little over four acres, which does exceed the two-acre minimum for a planned development. That property will remain located along High Market Street. The proposed zoning of heavy industrial allows for any permitted use that's listed in the limited industrial district, basically any industrial use, plus the operations that are needed for that use, warehousing, storage, transportation facilities, and several conditional uses that are listed in our zoning ordinance. The setbacks NHI are 50 feet for the front, 30 for the side, and 30 for the rear. The maximum height in our heavy industrial district does go up to 70 feet. If you do increase to that, beyond the 35-foot height limit up to 70 feet, then the setbacks have to match the height, with again, a minimum of 50 feet for the front yard setback. The surrounding tracts for this property... The surrounding tracks for this property are FA, MR10, and General Commercial. And then, of course, the city limits border this track to the southeast. There are surrounding uses of both commercial and residential. Development of this site, as industrial, would require a Level 4 buffer along the northwest boundary of the track that's adjacent to some residential property. And a Level 2 landscape buffer would be required along the northeast, adjacent to the existing commercial uses. Water is provided to this property by the Rural Water District, and sewer is provided by Georgetown County Water and Sewer. The future land use map shows the large majority of this track as employment, which is formerly, well, we refer to industrial on our map. So a future land use map amendment is not needed. A portion of the property is in a regulated flood zone due to the adjacent White's Creek. We do not think this is considered spot zoning due to its size. It is supported by the future land use map rezoning to Heavy Industry. This is, again, already an industrial-approved property. Rezoning it to HI will broaden the list of uses, and it does add the allowed height increase. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request back in July. There was no one but the applicant that came forward to speak, and the Planning Commission did recommend an approval for the rezoning with a vote of 6 to 0. There have been no changes to this request since we discussed it at second reading. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to pass Ordinance 25-29?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ordinance Number 25-30, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown County Code and Ordinances, Section 8-24, Fees Subsection C3 relating to tire disposal fees. And now we have a report from County Attorney Jay Watson. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The staff is still collecting and working on numbers for counsel on this, numbers related to tonnage coming in, amount of fees received, and costs to have the tires hauled off. So I think at this point, staff would recommend deferring this until we can complete that information for counsel.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Watson? Is there a motion to defer Ordinance 25-30?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. It's deferred. 8C, Ordinance Number 25-31, an ordinance to disestablish various county council-appointed boards and commissions and to assign functions and duties to county departments and the Sheriff's Office. We have a report from Jay Watson, County Attorney. Mr. Watson?
Thank you. Nothing's really changed on this since the report at second reading. Counsel will recall, there are six county-established boards or commissions recommended for disestablishment. None of the boards or commissions that are mandated by state law are being recommended. These are all boards or commissions that council established. Of the six, one has pretty much already dissolved just for... There are seven vacancies on it, and it's not been functioning in some time. Another, the Sheriff's Advisory Board likewise has already been dissolved and replaced with the Sheriff's T3 Board, which is functioning. Couple of the others rarely meet for lack of a quorum. And so, as we've mentioned before and discussed before, if council finds a need in any of these departments that are being... Where a board is being recommended for disestablishment finds a need for some particular issue to be looked at, council certainly can establish an ad hoc committee on an as-needed basis. So for those reasons, we would recommend disestablishment. I'm happy to read them out again. It's the Airport Commission, Fire District 1 Board, Historical Commission, Midway Fire Rescue Board, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Sheriff's Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any questions from Mr. Watson?
Yes, just a couple. Attorney Watson, is my understanding that the directors of those particular departments have been very responsive to any inquiries from the public regarding those commissions, really those departments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And they have been able to fulfill whatever the public questions were, they were able to respond to them in an intelligent and rapid manner?
On a department level, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, sir. That is my understanding.
And we have not received any comments or responses from the public concerning not terminating any of these particular boards and commissions?
No, sir. I have no information of that. No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to pass 25-31?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance Number 25-32, an ordinance to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to reflect the redesignation of tax map parcel 04-0413-033-03-04, located off Black Gum Road in Litchfield from Covenant Community to Residential. Ms. Holly Richardson, Planning Director. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, ma'am. As is customary, I'll address 9A and 9B together as they both affect this property on Black Gum Road. The parcel under consideration is currently vacant. And it was previously used as a wastewater facility for the peninsula Inland Point South development. That wastewater, at the time that that development on the east side of 17 was created, they could not be served by the Georgetown County Water and Sewer District. They had to have their own wastewater, which was, my understanding, pumped under Highway 17 to this site. They no longer have their own wastewater system. They are now part of Georgetown County Water and Sewer District. They have no use for this property. We've received a letter from their POA allowing for the release of it from the development. And again, this property is currently vacant and is not being used by them in any capacity. When you look at this property, it might appear that it is landlocked with no access, but there is a 50-foot ingress/egress easement to the site from Black Gum Road that goes across an adjacent parcel. And that's shown in the plat that's in your packet. The proposal here is for an MR10 zoning, basically a medium-density residential with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet or a quarter of an acre. Setbacks are 25 for the front, 10 for the side, and 15 in the back. Black Gum Road is a county-owned road. Any further encroachment that would be done onto Black Gum would require a county encroachment permit. The surrounding tracks here are mostly zoned plan development as part of the Litchfield Oaks PD. There is some FA and some MR10 in the vicinity of this track. This property does require a rezoning, because, again, its current use is shown basically as a wastewater facility site for a planned development. Being a PD, specific uses are assigned to specific tracks within the PD, so there is no other use approved for this track. So in order for it to have some use, it needs some sort of rezoning. The future land use map right now does show this property as Covenant Community or CovCom, which is basically the future land use map designation that we have given for planned developments. Staff proposes that that future land use map be amended to take that planned development designation away. And we would need the RES or the residential designation to support the MR10 zoning. Mr. Bird is the applicant. I believe he is here tonight. He applied for rezoning to General Commercial previously. The Planning Commission did not recommend favorably for that. Mr. Bird subsequently pulled his request and came back with this residential rezoning submittal. Any future development on the track under the MR10 would, of course, require compliance with building codes and with the zoning requirements of MR10. Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 21st. The applicant was the only one that spoke, and the commission recommended 4 to 1 approval for the rezoning request. They also recommended 5 to 0 for unapproval to the change to the future land use map from CovCom to RES. I'll be glad to answer any questions for either of those items.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 25-32?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? Motion passes. And along the same lines, Ordinance Number 25-33 that she already briefed us on, do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 25-33?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving to Ordinance Number 25-34, to rezone two parcels located on the western side of US 17 and Paulies Island, identified as TMS Numbers 04-0145A-028-02-00 and 04-0145A-028-03-00, totaling 1.03 acres from General Residential to Neighborhood Commercial. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you. This property currently contains a residential structure on one lot, and then the second lot is vacant. As you said, they are both currently zoned General Residential. The applicant stated that they're requesting this rezoning to Neighborhood Commercial to use the property to its highest and best use. This property is served by the Georgetown County Water and Sewer District, and Water and Sewer is available to the site. The current GR zoning allows for single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. It also allows for duplexes at 8,000 square feet and multifamily, although that is now limited at five units per acre along the Waukamau Neck. Setbacks here are 25 for the front, 10 for the side, and 20 in the back. They are requesting the Neighborhood Commercial zoning. That also allows for single-family dwellings at four units per acre, mobile homes, and then other limited commercial uses like beauty shops, banks, and restaurants without a drive-through and office uses. The setbacks for the proposed zoning are the same, with the exception of the rear yard setback, which reduces to 15 feet in a commercial district. The surrounding tracks are all zoned either GR or PD. And the current uses surrounding this property are either single-family or multifamily. The Village at Paulies condos that were built several years ago are located behind this track. This parcel has a little over an acre, which is sufficient area for the Neighborhood Commercial zoning district. There is commercial zone property located a little over 500 feet to the south. Also, the bridges at Litchfield is a mixed-use plan development. I think there's a Dollar General on a restaurant there now, but it is also approved for neighborhood commercial-type uses as a part of the front portion of that PD. The future land use map shows this property as residential mixed-use, or RMU, which these sites are to provide an appropriate transition between highly-travel corridors and existing and planned residential areas. This does support a mixture of neighborhood serving or low-impact commercial uses. So the future land use map does support the applicant's request for Neighborhood Commercial here. This type of development would require a Level 3 landscape buffer along the southern boundary and a Level 2 along the east and north, adjacent to the multifamily. The property is located in a regulated flood zone, AE12. Of course, if this property is developed commercially, those buildings would have to meet the requirements of the Waukamau Neck commercial overlay zone in terms of architecture. The 90-foot setback applies regardless of the zoning as well. We had a public hearing on this request in August. There was only one resident that spoke, and as I recall, was more looking for information than specifically opposing or supporting the request. Planning Commission voted to recommend approval with a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 25-34?
So moved.
And we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to Ordinance 25-35, to rezone approximately 9.09 acres located on the western side of David W. Ray Road in Georgetown County, identified as TMS Number 020201-001-02-00, from one-acre residential to Village 10,000-square-feet residential. Ms. Richardson?
Thanks. This parcel, like you said, is located on David Ray Road. It's currently vacant. It's about 2,500 feet just north of the intersection there with Pringle Ferry Road. The property owner has made this request to rezone the property to VR10, or Village Residential 10,000 square feet, in order to allow for clustered housing on the property for his family. The property today is zoned residential one acre, or one-acre residential. That requires a minimum of one-acre tracks. If it were to be subdivided, each track would have to have at least one acre. And R1 only allows for one principal use or one principal dwelling per lot. The minimum lot size in one acre is, of course, one acre. The proposed for VR10 is 10,000 square feet or a quarter acre. The setbacks reduce down to 25 feet from 50 for the front, 20 to 10 for the sides, and 15 from 30 for the rear. David Ray Road is a DOT road. Any driveways or encroachment onto that road would require permits from DOT. This site does have approximately 110 feet of road frontage on David Ray Road. Any new access easement would have to be plotted, of course, for ingress and ingress to the future home sites. The VR10 district does allow for what we call clustered housing. This was a district that we basically created when we zoned the western portion of the county to accommodate some heirs' property in those areas and to allow for multiple homes to be placed on a parcel without requiring subdivision. So the VR10 is our only district where you can put multiple units on an acre without a subdivision. It still has a density limit of four units per acre. The setbacks for each unit still have to be met, but you don't have to officially subdivide. The units do also have to be a minimum of 20 feet apart. This area is served by the Rural Water District, and there is currently no sewer that is provided by the Water and Sewer District at this time. The applicant would have to utilize septic tanks through DES. There is planned development zoning adjacent to this track. That, of course, is the Crown Point Development. There's also FA and R1 zoning in this area. Based on the size of this track, we don't consider this to be spot zoning. And the Crown Point PD zoning would be of a similar or smaller lot size per unit. The future land use map shows this property as RES or residential, which does support the medium-density development that's proposed here. This parcel is not located in a flood zone. And the Planning Commission held a public hearing. There was only the applicant present, and they voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval for the request.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Heard the report from Ms. Richardson. Do we have a motion? Anybody have any questions for her? No. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 25-35?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. One more for you. An ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-six, an amendment to the population element of the comprehensive plan, and you have another report for us?
Yes, one more.
Thank you.
The population element, you may remember, was approved not too long ago, back in May of 2024. This, of course, is in order to comply with the mandate of the state. It is part, as you said, of the comprehensive plan, one of the elements that we did maybe about halfway through the process. State law does require that we adopt a population element. It lists there what we need to consider: historic trends and projections, household numbers and sizes, educational levels, and income characteristics. It also states that the Planning Commission shall review the plan every five years or as often as necessary, but the five years is the required date. You will note that it has not been five years since 2024. We are here to address one of the goals of the population element, which looks at researching and analyzing and improving our population projections, and it specifically referenced the number of tourists. So that's what we've tried to do. We're trying to address one of those goals from the population element. Again, it's not a requirement to update it at this time, but we wanted to bring that information in front of the Planning Commission to address that goal. Staff did meet with our regional government office, Waukamau Regional, to discuss ways to address the seasonal population specifically on the Waukamau Neck. Obviously, that is where the influx of seasonal tourists come and where the concern was specifically mentioned. We did use data from the census and the land use data from Waukamau Regional. Their latest land use data was 2021. Basically, they used this information to determine the number of non-permanent dwellings on the neck and utilized an eighty percent occupancy rate for those seasonal dwellings. We did use a four-person-per-dwelling calculation to come up with a number of fifty-seven-thousand-seventy-seven for the seasonal population for the Waukamau Neck. I believe the number from the census was twenty-seven-thousand-ish. Basically, the change is shown on page sixteen of the draft that's in your packet. I also included the appendix from Waukamau Regional that shows how that number may slide and increase depending on what occupancy rate you use and what number of people in each dwelling unit you use. So if you assume a larger number in each house and you assume that eighty percent is too low, ninety percent is too high, you can still use that chart and see how that number increased. The Planning Commission did review the changes. They did ask us to add some language. They felt like that in other sections of our county was also going to be seeing some tourism increases soon with Black River State Park and other developments. They wanted us to add some language about that, that this might also need to be addressed there in the future. We did. We also updated the goal to kind of reflect that, so it would be more of a county-wide focus as opposed to just the neck. The Planning Commission does have to make a recommendation on any change to the comprehensive plan. As you know, we do have to hold a public hearing before a third reading on any change. The Planning Commission did recommend approval for the changes that are here. Since first reading, I did add two small charts to kind of graphically display the information we were talking about. Besides that, this is the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? Did you, I have a quick question. From a methodology standpoint, can you walk through the methodology of how the population elements are done for the state of South Carolina?
I have researched several others, especially ones on the coast. All of them start with the census, which is in itself an estimate, of course, but those are kind of the building blocks for all of them that I've been able to see. We have historically, of course, used the census. We also use information from the State Budget and Control Board. Waukamau Regional often will do their own population projections. Sometimes their traffic demand models will give us population projections, but that is essentially the basis of what we use. Again, we have to address all those other things listed in the state law: income, housing, race. So we have charts provided. We sometimes will do a comparison with other jurisdictions. And the ones I've seen, I've viewed, they do that as well. The coastal ones do often have a section where they address the fact that they do have a seasonal population. A lot of times, they use dollars to talk about that, as we did initially. I think those numbers are kind of harder to come by. Sometimes they'll talk about commuter traffic. Some of them might have a very large college, so they'll talk about seasonal student traffic. It's just, you can tell that each, each county kind of uses the information they have best available to reflect that seasonal data.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Richardson? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-five?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to make a motion to defer as an alternative at this point, and I can go into that when we get into the discussion portion.
So we need to vote on the first motion, correct, Mr. Watson?
Well, if you have a motion to defer, that would be a procedural motion, so I would take that up. If there's a current motion on the table right now, or on the floor, rather, to defer...
There was motion first to approve, there was a second, and then a motion to defer with, I have not asked for a second yet, I just want to make sure.
I would ask for a second on the motion to defer.
Is there a second for motion to defer?
A second.
Go ahead and take a vote on the deferral.
Who seconded?
I seconded.
Councilor Marant?
Okay. Yes.
Okay. All in favor to defer, raise your hand. Sorry. Yes. Is there any discussion for deferral? Thank you.
Yeah, are we going to discuss my motion to defer first?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let me get into that.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, Ms. Holly and I have had a lot of discussions about this right up front. Let me say that in early 2024, it occurred to me that the population element should be the foundation of the land use and the natural resources elements. Our planning should be based on people and not structures. The total available land on the mainland is four-hundred-and-forty-one square miles with a permanent population of thirty-six K-plus. The total usable land on the neck is thirty-four miles with a permanent population of twenty-seven plus, twenty-seven K-plus. The existing population element only covers statistics regarding the twenty-seven K-plus citizens identified in the 2020 census living in eleven-thousand-four-hundred permanent residents on the neck. Nothing was mentioned about the second homeowners. Knowing that these second homeowners were a critical factor in the day-to-day life on the neck, I contacted the US, the South Carolina Department of Revenue to find out why this group was left out of the count. As it turns out, they only count permanent residents in every county because the vast majority of the second homeowners live in South Carolina, and that would be a double counting. So that made all sense in the world. In August of 2024, I decided to reach out to some well-informed people with working knowledge of the impact of second homeowners on the neck. The goal was to determine the population of this significant group, and the group included Mayor Brian Henry and his administrator, Mark Holwiler, Deputy Director of the Waukamau Regional Council of Government, and his team, Sheriff Carter Weaver and his team, and a fellow by the name of Doug Worst, who is in GIS business here and lives here on the Waukamau Neck, and myself. We knew that there were eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-second residents on the Waukamau Neck, and if you recall, I'd said that we had eleven-point-four-thousand permanent residents and almost nine-thousand-second residents on the neck. The job was to determine how many people occupied each dwelling during each month of the year. Each group analyzed the data that they had collected individually. When the groups came up with an answer to the question, it turned out that they were all within ten, in a ten percent bandwidth, which I found amazing. I will also mention that we tried to include the short-stay population residing in hotels and resorts. I personally visited eight of the twelve, and they asked them to supply me with monthly headcounts over a twelve-month period. Unfortunately, only one of the smaller establishments responded. They, we determined that of all the hotels and resorts would have responded, it would have increased the population by a thousand people each month. We did not include that data in the bell curve that we ended up making. I have discussed all this information, all the information collected in the study with Holly, and we, the study group, would like to include some of the findings based on empirical and analytical data from the 2024 population study in the population element, run the changes back through the Planning Commission, and back to us for final approval. And thank you for the time.
You, Councilor Anderson. Hearing that, is there any further discussion?
Holly, is there any particular time period for this ordinance to be passed? Or...
No, sir, not until, you know, five years. We recently approved it in 2024, so we're not obligated to update it unless, you know, there's some huge, big change for five years.
Holly, oh, go ahead.
It's not like what he's talking about, that there may be some other residences out there, residents out there who may have not been counted in this particular count. That's what it sounds like. And he's seeking additional time to confirm that? That's what you're doing, Bob?
Yeah, if you refer to the bell curve that I put into that report two years ago, you can see the permanent residents are kind of flat-lined all the way across the twelve-month period, and then the bell curve comes into effect from the second homes and the population driven by that, which increases us at the peak in June and July at ninety, at eighty-thousand people. And Holly's got pretty much the same numbers that we came up with two years ago, but the whole reason we did all this was to make sure we got it in the land use plan, I mean, in the population plan this time around. And I think that the bell curve that we did does an excellent job, month by month, of watching the population grow from January through until July, June, July, and then back down to December. And I'd like you all to look at that, and that's really the reason why I wanted to defer this, because I think that, that particular bell curve graph does a very good job of showing the average population, and she came up with, I think, what was it? Fifty-two thousand, fifty-seven thousand average, and we had fifty-six thousand average. And we did all this using the metadata that was supplied through the COG two years ago, and it probably hadn't changed any. But I would like you to defer this and take a look at what we did, and particularly that graph, and I believe that graph should be in the, in the, in the plan. And also, we should be spelling out what, what impact this eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty residents has on the Waukamau Neck at all times. That puts us at fifty-six thousand people over there, where we've only got thirty-six thousand on the, on the mainland with, what, what, four-hundred, four-hundred-and-forty miles, square miles, against thirty-four miles, square miles on the neck. So we're packed in over there, but we're not reflecting that as much as I think we should in the land use plan and in the natural resources plan, particularly for stormwater, and I'll, and I'll rest my case.
That is, so wouldn't that affect the entire, the economy of the entire county, not just Waukamau Neck, though? Wouldn't it affect the entire county with the...
Oh, yeah, I think it does. Absolutely. It flows, you know, you know, the Waukamau Neck doesn't stop the money from moving.
Thank you.
Do you have, are there any questions for Councilor Anderson or Ms. Richardson? Councilor Anderson, I have a question for you for deferring it. Is your goal to have staff be able to review the data and then incorporate?
Yes, what I want to do is be able to sit down with Holly and determine, you know, based on what we did two years ago, I want to see what the details were and what they did. She's given me a copy of it, but, you know, I'd like to sit down with her and go through it all. And particularly in the introduction, we need to mention these second homes, and it's not in there currently, I don't believe, yet. Is that correct, Ms. Holly?
No, I think what you're saying, Councilwoman Anderson, is you would like the introduction to the whole element to touch on the fact that the population is seasonal and increases and maybe refer them back to this section later in the document, which we can certainly do.
Right, that's, and so, you know, and you and I discussed it, you were thinking you might have to go back through the Planning Commission again, and I wanted to give you time to do that.
I don't think, that may not necessarily, I could review that with Attorney Watson, that does seem kind of minor enough, but I think, yes, if we're adding charts and numbers and information that isn't in this draft, that I feel like would probably need to go back through.
Well, that's, that's what I'm hoping we can do, and as, another thing I pointed out is that all the statistics about the permanent population as far as race and number of people, at what age, and everything else, we couldn't even do that. So that won't be a possibility with these second homes. We don't, nobody's, nobody's keeping that data. But we, you know, I'm not saying, saying take it out for, for all the permanent homes. I think it's pertinent, but we can't go that far with these second homes because nobody other than us has ever made, made an attempt to do this until recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. There is a current motion to defer with a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand to defer. Opposed? Three-three. Motion fails. Fails. Okay. So now we go back to the original motion, which we had a first and a second on ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-six to pass the amendment to the population element of the comprehensive plan as it currently sits from the report provided by Holly Richardson. All in favor, please raise your, is there any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Councilor Anderson opposes. Motion passes as draft. Moving to ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the first amendment of that certain fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Santee Electric Cooper Incorporated relating to, without limitation, the extension of the investment period and other related matters. And we have a report from Ms. Kelly Robertson-Slegel, Economic Development Director. Ms. Robertson-Slegel?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the council for allowing me to provide a quick report. This evening, I bring forward ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-seven for second reading. This ordinance authorizes the first amendment to the existing fee in lieu of taxes and incentive agreement between Georgetown County and Santee Electric Cooperative Incorporated. The amendment provides an extension of the investment period, allowing Santee Electric the necessary time to complete its planned capital improvements in the county. For reference, the original agreement was approved by council in December of 2021 to support Santee Electric's planned investments within Georgetown County. Santee Electric has been and continues to be a valued partner in Georgetown County, providing reliable electric service that is both essential to residents and to businesses. By providing this amendment, council ensures that company's continued investment remains eligible under the FLO program, strengthening the county's tax base and supporting economic development. I would emphasize that the incentive carries no financial liability or credit risk for the county. The benefits include, the benefits, including infrastructure investment and community, community support, far outweigh any costs. Staff respectfully recommends approval of ordinance number twenty-five thirty-seven, continuing our strong partnership with Santee Electric Cooperative, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson-Slegel. Are there any questions?
Well, memory serves correct, was that the fifty-million-dollar investment they were going to do? Is that what that was?
Yes, sir.
And we're going to extend it for another year, another, what was it? Five?
Five years.
Five years. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-seven?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-eight, an ordinance to amend the millage rates as adopted as part of the FY 2025 slash 2026 budget ordinance, and we have a report from Ms. Caris Langston, County Finance Director. Ms. Langston?
Good evening again. Ordinance twenty-five thirty-eight amends the fiscal year 2526 budget ordinance to incorporate the rollback millage calculation as required by South Carolina Code, Section twelve dash thirty-seven dash two-fifty-one E. This ensures that the county's tax revenue remain neutral following the updated property values for reassessment. So after posting to tonight's agenda, staff identified a minor error in our original rollback calculation. A corrected handout was given to you this evening, so I want you to reference that and not what was put on the agenda. The first page just is the same, and it shows the assessed values, or the change in assessed values from tax year 24 to the new reassessed values excluding growth on that. The second page is the one that I want you to kind of focus on. That's the rollback millage sheet. The things that have changed on there, we didn't roll back quite as much after we found our, our error, and so general fund is going to roll back to thirty-two-point-four mills. Law enforcement will roll back, it's, actually, it rolls back to twenty-one-point... It's actually, it rolls back to 21.6 mills. But if you'll remember, we increased their millage by .7 mills for the fiscal year '26 budget, so we have to add that back in. So their millage will roll back, actually, to 22.3 mills. Debt service is going to be 10.5 mills rather than the 10.4 that we originally said. And then the school district, city of Georgetown, and town of Andrews also changed. That's not part of our ordinance, though. So just to illustrate the impact of this rollback for you, I have a slide up on your screen there. In tax year 2024, if your house was valued at $200,000, the county operating millage of 78 mills would have generated $624 in taxes. So once reassessment happens, if you'll remember, part of this is that your assessed value can't increase more than 15%. But if you are at that max, that cap, your assessed value is now going to be $230,000. We're rolling back the mills to 71.6. So that would, your taxes would then be $658.72. If your assessed value increased by 10%, your new assessed value would be $220,000 at the 71.6 mills. That would generate $630.08 in taxes. And if it increased by 5% or went to $210,000, you would have taxes of $601.44. So 10% is kind of our sweet spot, our percent. If you look on that first page, the total percent difference between '24's assessed value and '25, less growth, that percent is 9.37. So that kind of lines up with that. I have a whole team of people. I have to throw a hand out to all three of them. Our auditor, Ken Baker, assessor Ted Tim Holt, and Walt. We've worked really hard for the last couple of months on this. And Ken did most of the heavy lifting, put it all together. But I think we've got it right, and I think we've got some really good numbers here. If you have any questions, I'm not sure I can answer them, but I got a team of people behind me to answer them for me.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Are there any questions for Ms. Langston and the team?
Ms. Karis, I've got a question. This graph that you've got up on the screen, can you send that to me?
Certainly.
All right. I'd appreciate that.
I have a question about the rollback for law enforcement. Just to make, I want to make sure I understand it. I know we capped it out last year. And does this rollback mean that you, there's still room to cap it in the future?
No.
Okay. So it includes it?
Yeah. So what we did, so actually, if you look at that, the second page of the handout that says the tax year '25 rollback millage, if you'll look at the bottom, it says, I mean, I did a little asterisk by law enforcement there. We're putting it at 22.3 mills. That's what we're going to adopt or what we're asking you to adopt. But that number is the rollback millage, which rollback put us at 21.6 mills. But then we added the .7 mills that was their cap for this year, bringing it to 22.3 mills.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Langston and the team? Okay. Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 25-38?
I move.
And thank you, Councilor Anderson. And the second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Langston. And now we'll go to first reading of ordinances. Note the following ordinances are to be read into the record by title only. Ordinance number 25-39, amendment of the FY 2025/2026 budget ordinance. There's only one. Okay. Moving to the approval of minutes for our regular council meeting dated September 9, 2025. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move.
Thank you, Councilor Moran. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. And is there any further business to come before council? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Thank you, Councilor Moran. And the second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're adjourned, and have a good night.